We'll wait for Diane to make it back to her seat. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. It's a regular Thursday, February 19th, a regular meeting of Marine City Commission. We have Pastor Whitstone here tonight. He's going to lead us in the prayer and then immediately after the prayer, we're going to go into the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
Let's go to the Throne Room of Grace. Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight and we just thank you that you care about every aspect of our lives. Lord, your word calls us out and tells us that we should seek your face in all that we do and we should pray for the leaders that have been elected. And Lord, that's what we're doing tonight. May we start this meeting off tonight with throwing off all those things that entangle us just for a moment and realize who you are, that you are God, and that you are here tonight and you are willing, if we seek your face, to guide and direct in every avenue. For everything that goes on, from looking into budgets to talking to people about decisions that they're doing, to everything that goes on in this room, Lord, if we just seek your face, that you will guide and direct us and you will be our God. Lord, we just thank you for being here tonight. I thank you for allowing me to come and participate and bring these wonderful people into the Throne Room of Grace. Lord, just let us think about you tonight, just for a moment as we start. And just all of us, thank you for what you're doing in this community. Lord, as we do so often in our church, I want to pray for this community. Lord, I pray that you will guide and direct and will bring this community to financial stability and bring this community where people that would want to come in and be part of this area, Lord, we just have such a beautiful area that you've given us and I ask that you would guide and direct. Lord, I thank you for these leaders that are here tonight. They have been elected, yes, but they're also giving their time and just want to see things go well, so I ask that you touch them and you lift them up and you be with them this very night. Lord, thank you for all that you're doing and we know the best is yet to be as long as we focus our heart and our mind and our thought and give over our community and all that we're going to do to you because of who you are. In Jesus' precious and holy name, we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Lovett.
Here.
Commissioner Malley.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
The acting city manager.
Here.
Moving on to Communications, we have four A, which is a letter from Rosalie Squires, in which she detailed some of her concerns about handicap accessibility during the last election.
Make a motion that we accept the communications placed on file.
Motion to support. Do we have any comments or discussion? Diane?
I think that there is one important issue here and that is, you know, when we have things at the City Hall location, do we have spots for handicap parking? Is that marked off?
To the website that she referenced in her correspondence, I downloaded the tool that they use. I went to the website, got a satellite image of our fire hall. We have 40 non-accessible spots, one accessible and one ban-accessible. So we're 40 and two and we are within the guidelines of the tool that Mrs. Squires asked us to take a look at.
I think one of the concerns was at the actual election that there is no handicap sites marked off near the entrance. Is that something that we normally do?
The handicap spots are permanent out there.
Okay, a couple of things. I had the fire department talk to the federal agency to make sure because I know we went and talked to the previous DPW department head and he said that the two spots we had in the side were fine. But what he told us is when the fire department is just doing their usual stuff here, they don't need to post any more than the two slots in the back. Because the door in the rear is the ADA accessible door, he suggested what we need to do is we'll paint two spots closest to the door straight out. We get portable signs, which we've ordered, we ordered those last night at the Fire Authority. The portable signs will then need to be put out by whoever's conducting the meeting that night into those spots, but when the sign is not there, those spots are not ADA. Anybody can park in them. So that'll have to be marked off eventually. So that's what they instructed us to do to solve the problem here at this building, which we've already put in place. The other thing I would suggest for Mrs. Squires maybe is to register to vote absentee and that would help because then it can be mailed directly to her home and that doesn't cause her the problem there. We do have the stairlift at city offices because that was another concern of hers because she called me. You know, I mentioned the stairlift. We have a stairlift for the four steps you can sit in and go up. She said it wasn't hard for her, so I also suggested that if she was at the door, ask someone to come and bring it to her, you know, I mean, yeah, and so I said we'll try everything we can to accommodate and comply with the rules.
Part of the problem was that she had to park pretty far away.
Yeah, that part I can't help with City Hall. We solved that issue here, so we're going to take care of that issue.
Is there a handicap spot marked near the front entrance of the? Guy's Center?
There are downwater streets there, there's several of them.
Right, but there's not, there's not one close proximity to the Guy's Center. Maybe something that you may want to consider, you know, but I don't know if we have a van-accessible curb cut close by. I think there's one just a little bit down.
Yes. I'm just wondering if you could do the same thing we're going to do here, get the portable sign for one city offices.
Or just paint a section of the curb blue. That doesn't cost much.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, I think we do need to make, since that building's turned into a little bit more of a permanent office, we need to make some accommodations if we can. I'd agree.
I just know we can't, there's no way to put a ramp.
No.
Because it's too short.
Right.
So, you know.
I'll look into that.
So, yeah, we checked out with the Fire Authority and that's, that's what we're going to put into place for the future for handicap accessibility.
All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. You're bored. Now, we're moving on to the public comment portion of the meeting and ask people to come up to the podium, give us your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes. G?
Does that get deducted from my five minute?
My name is Judy White. It's 8757 Anchor Bay Drive in Clay Township. I'm a forener in Marine City, an interloper, if you will. With me tonight is Bob Klingler from Rockford Carving. I'm here to represent Marine City Music Festival. You know, since we were incorporated as a 501(c)(3) back in 2008, we used to make the money for the music festival by working poker tournaments largely through Don Waziniak's place called Snookers. And we did well and we made, generally speaking, between $16,000 and $18,000 a year working the four poker tournaments and then we were able to afford the music festivals, which we put on every year thereafter until the state became very, very restrictive with their rules and literally strangled charity poker as a source of income for us. And with that being so severely restricted, we didn't have enough money for anything but for a one-day festival last summer and no sight of any kind of income after that. So in fact, last July, I regarded as our last hurrah and that we were done and there simply would not be any more music festivals. And I had met Bob Klingler and we had worked together on festivals and on, of course, raffle guitars and Bob had given us guitars for several years that we had raffled off to help us meet the bills for the music festival, for which I'm extremely grateful, and it really kept us afloat. And Bob and I were talking last July about the fact that we were done and Bob kept saying, it can't be done, it can't stop, we have to keep going, it's too important for Marine City and I'm going, oh, yeah, right. And I had a really sour attitude about it. He said, we have to meet, we have to meet. I thought, why? Why bother? Why bother? Well, I bothered and this delightful man has become the sponsor for the music festival. And we're back and we're back really big and we're on for July 10 and 11 this year at the City Beach and we have an extraordinary lineup and I have given you a card to show you who our talent is for the event. For Friday, the 10th, we're opening with a local famous guy, Jimmy Dehno, and then we're switching to Austin Jenks, who's nationally famous and is a winner from the Voice Talent Contest on TV. And of course, our headliner that evening is Marine City's own very famous Jeff Goot. And of course, he is a winner from television's The X Factor. So we think that's going to draw a really big crowd. We're set for overflow parking. We're going to use the high school parking lot for that. We'll have a shuttle bus, et cetera, et cetera. I think we're getting into the big time. We're even going to have artists' trailers for our performers, which we've never done before. For Saturday, we are opening again with local talent and that is the group that's called Cross the Line. They have a growing following in the community and we think that they're going to really boost our attendance in the evening. And then for headliners, Boogie Dynamite. Boogie Dynamite brings back 1970. If you lived through it, you're going to be excited and you're taken back to the old days and staying alive or whatever that was. If you're very young, you'll probably find it all quite witty with the afros and the bell bottoms. So we think it's going to be a great evening and along toward the end, we're going to raffle off a rather spectacular instrument and I want Bob to talk to you about what that is.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having us tonight. Little side note, I've really enjoyed working with Judy since, basically since 2009 when we moved to town and David Simpson's been outstanding, very dogmatic, persistent. This is going to be top-notch. I'm really excited as much as Judy is. I'd like to say that we also have the inputs from Jimmy Dehno and he himself has been over to the shop on Degurcy in town. I guess I live out of town, but I work in Marine City, so Jimmy's been over a number of times. I asked him to join me at the NAMM Show, which is the biggest music show in the United States in January. I had him come up to the Gibson booth, the very largest booth they ever had, and I said, Jimmy, pick out a guitar that anybody would be happy with on the wall. And what he did, we walked up and down the Gibson USA, we walked down the Gibson Custom and Arts carved tops and we went to Gibson Memphis. Jimmy loved the Les Paul Les Plus, which is a brand-new 2015 model. It's got 15 new features, the most features of any breakout model year in the history of Gibson, such things as titanium inserts in the bridge, G-Force tuners that can tune up to 124 different keys, removable pickguard. And of course, Rockford Carving, we have a total complement. All their guitars this year are 100% Mother of Pearl from the South Pacific, top of the Just, we, he couldn't be more thrilled. We got the guitar. Tonight's the coldest night in history. I hope not, but I didn't bring it tonight. We don't, we didn't have time to acclimate the guitar. It's going to be on the website. See it, it's beautiful, it's a desert burst and it's killer. We're really thrilled to be working in Marine City with Judy's, just a joy to work with. She loves this city as much as David and I and Jimmy do, so in that case, we hope you all come and you won't be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else who would like to address the commission? All right, seeing no one, we'll move on to approve all of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support check in.
Motion to support. Do we have any discussions, questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Agenda has been approved. Approved the minutes, I'm sorry. Moving on to the consent agenda.
We didn't approve the minutes.
We didn't approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular commission meeting of February 5th, 2015.
Now, we're back on track. Any questions on the minutes, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Okay, minutes have been approved. Now, we're on to the consent agenda.
I have a question about one of the items on the consent agenda and that is the poppy sale.
Why don't we make a motion first to approve it and then we'll have the discussion.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. We have motion to support. Now, do we have any discussion?
Yes, on the puppies for veterans event, that's a St. Clair group that is coming in a week before our group and personally, I don't think that is in good taste. We're hitting up the same people. You know, we have a group that will be selling puppies here as well, so I personally would not like to see both groups competing against each other like that.
I think we've had this conflict in the past, haven't we? Isn't this occurred before? Seems to me that we've had two different groups in here selling puppies in the past.
Well, we have our veterans, our own, that sell puppies here.
Right.
But not another group from.
Yeah, I believe we have, actually. I believe this has happened before.
Not to my knowledge.
I guess I don't remember. I think we did.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it did. And I don't think it really caused much of a conflict, but do we have, we haven't received, we have received a permit application from the Marine City group?
What happened was the second group tried to have the same weekend and the city manager, David and I, sat down and we decided, you know, they got their request in first, the Marine City group, and we said, well, you suggested they choose another date. Unfortunately, they chose the date the weekend prior to our BFW, the Marine City Veterans Summer Puppy.
And it is a May event, so you haven't received any, you know, communication yet. It's several months away.
Commissioner Avery?
I would suggest that we not turn down their request, but we should allow the local group to have first date since it is a better chance for getting more turnout, which would be used to help the veterans in the city. So I would suggest that we offer them a different date that is after our local group. Thank you.
Well, I think our option would probably be to deny this permit application and suggest they go for another date. I mean, so if we want, we could probably vote on these individually and move that way and then you can decide how you want to vote on that each one.
Is it amenable to amend my motion to exclude that one item, to vote on separately? If my supporter would be amenable to that?
Okay, so we have motion to support to amend the original motion. Any discussion on that one?
And you want me to make, you want me to make the motion?
I'm just asking, no, the motion's been made.
I would just support what everyone else has said, you know, to give our guys first dibs. It's, both groups do very well at supporting, you know, many wonderful things, but, you know, I think that's our role to support our direct community and I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I don't think there should be competition between, you know, charitable organizations to get, you know, a favored spot, but I do think we have an obligation to our own, you know, group, so.
So, we already have a motion on the floor, so.
We have a motion, two motions. We have a motion now to amend the original motion, so we need to vote on that one. So if we're ready, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, so now it's, the original motion's been amended to exclude the item 8c. All in favor of approving the agenda as amended? Say aye. Aye opposed? All right. Thank you, board. Moving on to item nine.
If you want to take up the issue of the special permit for the puppies at this time?
Yeah, we didn't do that.
I would make a motion to.
I thought we, the motion was to exclude it.
No, he amended it to exclude voting on it.
So now we need to address 8c as a consent agenda item. So I would make a motion to.
Wait a minute, we have to make motion to accept the agenda as amended?
We did.
Is that what it is?
Right, and then I was moving on to the next thing, but, because I've misunderstood, I thought we were just excluding it from this vote entirely, so go ahead.
But I would agree that we should address the item.
Yes.
I would, I would make a motion to deny that based upon the date and direct the clerk or interim city manager to contact the group to discuss our concern about the date with hopes that we can resolve that.
Do we have support? So we have motion to support. Any other discussion?
I guess I'm a little concerned. I realize our guys picked the date first and then came in later and, I mean.
It seems a little bit like one-upmanship.
Well, I suppose, but, I mean, they're all veterans and.
I think we're not saying no, we're saying find another date, given our guys' date precedent since they did file first.
Yeah, I guess I would hope maybe that would have been talked about when it came to the first issue, that they picked the same day, you know.
I did speak with them and asked them to submit the date and I wasn't at the office when it's made.
Okay. Because, I mean, we asked them to submit a date and they picked the weekend before. I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know. I think people will support all the veterans regardless of where they came from. I mean, it's a, honestly, it's a free country, isn't it? So I guess I'd support either one, both weekends. I don't think it's going to make a difference to me, what weekend each one comes. I'd support them both.
Valid point. Anybody else?
All right, so the conflict is they don't want to run the poppy sale together, the same weekend? That's what you're saying, that the conflict?
No, originally, they were looking for the same weekend and then they were asked to resubmit a different date and they picked the weekend prior to the one the Marine City group had already got a permit for. So it'll be the week before the Marine City troop.
So St. Clair's going to do theirs the week before.
What I'm thinking is if they, in other words, they couldn't do it together on the same weekend, that would be cutting both of the sales then, is that what you're saying?
Well, they're looking for the same territory to.
They want the same locations.
Oh, okay, then.
Which seems, you know, silly if they have them both standing there trying to collect for two different organizations, even though all the money's going to the same place theoretically. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Aye nay? Okay, now we can move on to item 9A on the agenda, which is a Michigan Municipal League presentation. And just to give you a little precursor on why this is here, Chief Tilery and myself had had some conversations and we've met with some recruiters and talked to some people and we kind of started just coming around to the, between the two of us, so we thought maybe it would be a better idea to hire a recruiter or at least listen to what a recruiter can do for us. So we have invited someone from the Michigan Municipal League to come down here and speak to us on that and if you'd like to introduce her.
Mr. Berry, this is Joyce Parker. She has been with the MML for five years. She's also the president of the municipal group. She has, she's a consultant as well. She's worked as an emergency manager for the state of Michigan. She's worked throughout the state as a city manager, both in Michigan and Illinois, for over 25 years and she has graciously come here at our request to tell us what the MML can do for a city manager's service.
Hello, Ms. Parker.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. As the interim city manager had indicated, my name is Joyce Parker and I'm one of the facilitators for the Michigan Municipal League. The league basically have about five facilitators that are used in reference to searches for city managers, city administrators, as well as other key department head positions. What I'd like to do is refer back to a handout that was given to each one of the members and what I'll do is highlight some of the areas related to the search process. The information that has been provided is somewhat abbreviated and certainly after during the presentation, I will be available to answer any questions that members of the city commission or the mayor might have, or the staff for that matter. So basically, as far as the Michigan Municipal League as an organization, the organization is nonpartisan, a statewide association serving cities and villages. It was founded in 1899 and worked exclusively with local government and public entities. The Michigan Municipal League has completed nearly 200 searches since 1998. They have a proven methodology and they also are able to customize the process to meet specific community needs. In terms of the search facilitators, they are selected by the Michigan Municipal League. The facilitators do have decades of experience in local government and are assigned based on availability and community preference. In terms of the process or the steps that take place with the search, in the beginning of the process, generally, a recruitment profile is developed to attract quality applicants. And as part of that process, a profile is developed related to the candidate. That process is handled primarily by the mayor and the commission in the case of Marine City, as well as with the facilitator. And then in addition to a candidate profile, a community profile is established that provides information related to the community. It provides information that is beneficial to the candidate to determine if there is compatibility in terms of the community. And then as part of the process, there's also an organizational profile that provide information about various companies as well as the culture of the community. The other area that is discussed in great detail is the development of an advertising strategy and as part of that strategy, a brochure is developed as well as the ad. Both of those items are reviewed in detail with the community prior to anything being assimilated or advertised. An outreach strategy is also developed related to marketing the position. MML has direct access to Michigan's municipal managers. In some cases, there's direct contact either through email or by letter or by telephone. They also have detailed profiles on the MML website and they get a number of hits on a regular basis and also have outreach options with ICMA, which is one of the national organizations for outreach. Also network with professional affiliations and with social media contacts. Once the advertisement process is completed and the information in terms of resumes are provided, there's a number of steps in reference to the review process. Number one is to receive, review and rate the resumes. Basically, through the process, all resumes are evaluated and the city then will be provided a summary on each one of the candidates. In addition to that, was there a question? Okay, all right. In addition to that, there's an initial reference check of all of the candidates based on the profile and the criteria established earlier in the process. The facilitator then provide to the city commission and to the mayor, screen candidates that should meet the profile and actually, as part of the process, a short list of candidates that should be considered for interviews. And then in addition to that, there's a development of an interview strategy with the mayor and members of the city commission. In terms of closeout activities, generally, it takes about ninety to a hundred and twenty days to get through the process. Based on a standard process, the fee would not exceed ten thousand dollars. And in addition to that, enhanced packages are also available. Are there any questions?
Assuming it wouldn't not exceed ten thousand dollars, it could be less than ten thousand dollars?
Basically, the standard is generally ten thousand dollars if, for example, there's some type of change that occurs within the process that would dictate something less than ten thousand, that is something that could be negotiated with MML.
What, what would happen if the search dragged on past like the typical ninety to a hundred and twenty days? Would there be additional charges usually?
No.
So it's pretty much a flat fee?
It's a flat fee. Now, in some cases, if, for example, the city was interested in an enhanced process, for example, if you're talking about more community engagement or receptions or something that deviates from the standard, there may be an additional fee for that.
And if anyone else has any questions, I mean, I can keep asking them, but if somebody else has one, you want to jump in? I guess the other, the main question I'd ask is what, you know, as opposed to us doing this, conducting this talent search on our own, what do you think the major benefit would be going through the MML organization?
Well, I think some of the advantages with MML include really having the contacts and the network in terms of identifying key candidates for the position outside of just a general advertisement process. I think it offers the candidate some level of confidentiality until such a time that the screening process has been completed and the major shortlist is in place. And so I think that's an advantage because often managers want to feel some comfort level that the information will be handled properly until such time they are being considered for the position, seriously considered for the position. The other advantage is with the evaluation process, as I had mentioned earlier, with MML, the resumes are evaluated based on the candidate profile, which is fairly objective, and the information is provided to the city that provides something that's fairly easy to navigate and come to a determination of who your top candidates might be.
Say one, Commissioner Malley?
Would you be screening, like say, would you narrow it down to ten candidates? Or is there a certain amount of candidates that you would narrow it down for us to judge on?
Yes. For example, if we received, let's say, thirty-five, forty resumes, what I'll do is evaluate each one of those resumes based on the criteria established by the commission. And from that information, based on discussions with the city, I should be able to narrow that scope down to about ten candidates. And what I'll provide is a narrative on each one of the candidates to give you some information in terms of why they're on the shortlist. The other thing that I will do is actually interview all of the candidates prior to submitting the list to the city to determine whether, what is on paper is consistent with what I find through that interview process. And then from there, a meeting will be held with the city to discuss the candidates and to determine whether, in fact, you want to interview maybe some of the ten that's on that list, or nine, or how, how many you have on that list, how many you would like to interview, and then make arrangements for the interview process.
Approximately, how many do you, in hiring a city manager through the past years, about how many candidates have you applied for the job? In other words, where's there, you mentioned forty. Have there been more candidates for other jo, for another job, you know, for a city manager job? In other words, you've been up to sixty candidates to narrow it down? Or is there, have you, how, how many would you, let's say, make a cutoff and say, I won't interview more than seventy-five people that are applying for the job? Or is there a cutoff?
Well, generally, what is recommended is to interview maybe no more than five to six, and...
No, 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 I meant for you, people putting the applications in for the job, for, I mean, is there a cutoff?
No.
How many people, in other words, you would go through the whole entire list?
I'll go through the entire list.
You wouldn't take the top twenty or something?
No, I'll evaluate each one of the resumes. Some may be easier than others just based on the criteria for the position. So for example, you know, if your criteria includes, let's say, a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, so many years of experience, certain areas of skills and abilities, and a candidate does not have that, that type of background, then it would be fairly easy to eliminate that person from the pool.
Thank you.
I would think you would probably set up a timeframe, right? You would say for the next thirty days, we're going to accept resumes or whatever, rather than a certain number. It'd be, it would be up to anybody for, say, thirty or sixty days, whatever you pick.
Yeah, and, and what, what I would do as a facilitator is to provide to the city to get the process underway, a schedule for the process. It would be a schedule that would be recommended to the city and we can review the schedule together. If there's a need to adjust the schedule, we can do that as well. But generally, that's how the process starts.
Okay. Commissioner Lovett?
How well do you, do you vet them in terms of criminal background checks, you know, their experiences or the experience the previous community has had with them? We've gotten, you know, in the past, haven't had a lot of good luck in some of the candidates that have come through.
Well, generally, prior to submitting my report to the city, for those that are on the shortlist, let's say the list of ten, I will do a credential check to determine whether they do have the credentials that they stated on their resume. I'll also check references that have been given to MML to determine whether the information is consistent with, again, what is on the resume about the candidate. And then once the city, and I'll provide to the city the, the information from the reference check as well. Once the city determines who they're interviewing and select, let's say, their finalists for the position, then a full background check is, is conducted on that person. Because generally, in order to actually do a background check, you almost have to offer the position to the person. It would be subject to the background check.
Well, let's give someone new, Commissioner Hendrick?
I'm going to go a little bit more on what she said because, you know, I've been doing my research and, and I'm just going to say, this is no reflection on you, but we've used the MML for multiple times in the past. And there's another community currently, and this is kind of how people feel that, like this community, and this is a recent one that, that's working with you. Some of these people were easily discoverable at best with problematic work histories, but it was never tuned in. So what I'm trying to figure out is, because we've received some in the past and we've always used the MML, what I'm trying to find out is what are you going to do differently this time to keep us from ending up the same way we have in the past?
Well, you know, I can't speak to the past because I don't really have the benefit of the information. But what I can say is, is that quite a bit of time will be devoted early in the process to determine what the criteria is that you're looking for as far as qualifications for the position. And in addition to that, what concerns or issues related to the city should be considered as I start evaluating candidates to make sure that the candidates that are brought to you are a good fit for the city. And then just in terms of local participation, certainly, you know, if there are individuals locally that may have an interest in the position, part of what we do is provide a link to your website to make sure that there is access and we do not discourage local participation if you have viable candidates for the position.
Would we be able to see all the resumes even if you weed them out? Could we still see them even if we, if they're not have all the qualifications?
We could sit down and work through a process related to the resumes. Part of MML's strength, I think, as a group to facilitate searches, is the fact that candidates do look at their information being held in confidence until such a time that they're seriously being considered for a position. And what I can do as a facilitator is sit down with the commission and go through the resumes with you as part of that overall summary. We can look at the summary, I can talk about the details of each one of the candidates if there was an interest in doing that.
Do you do interviews yourself with any of the candidates when we get down to the shortlist?
Yes, actually, I interview the top group on that shortlist prior to bringing that information to the city.
Do you guys, do you videotape or record any of that?
I can't speak for other facilitators, but I do not videotape the interviews.
Okay. How many communities are you currently working with right now?
Well, right now, MML is, I can't give you the exact number, I would estimate maybe ten to fifteen.
Okay, so all of them have a certain time period and we're all going to be looking for basically the same thing? So that spreads you a little thin then, trying to help every community?
Yeah, well, we have about five facilitators. So like in my case, I may be assigned to four or five communities with various positions, whereas other facilitators are assigned to other communities.
I don't know if anybody can, he wants to ask his question.
Well, Commissioner Avery, do you have any questions? Commissioner Simpson?
I did not, no, it's, information's very clear.
Commissioner Malley?
Okay, one other question. Now, say if somebody is in a local facility around here and wants to apply for the job, they have to go through you or could they, in other words, could we accept an application from somebody other than, even though we, we grant you to look for a city manager, but if somebody came into our city hall and wanted to apply for the job?
They should probably...
They have to go through you, is what I'm saying?
Right, they should probably go through MML. When the position is advertised, there's specific information related to the acceptance of emailed information or information through the mail process. And it's important because all of that information is actually consolidated with, with one division. It's evaluated prior to the information being submitted to the city. So for example, if someone applied directly through the city and I was not aware of it or MML was not aware of it, it's outside of that process.
Okay. That's what I was getting to, in other words, if somebody came in off the street and applied for the job and he was a very good candidate, then is there a flat rate fee that we have to pay you even though if we, we found another candidate, is what I was, I was getting to? So in other words, we will have to pay the ten thousand dollars regardless, but they have to go through, they have to go through you though?
Right.
Okay.
Right, it's after the fact, once the search is completed.
Okay, all right.
And keep in, keep in mind, the information will be linked to your website too, so you can refer them to your website, that information will be there.
Ms. Parker, I think you're uniquely qualified to answer this question because of your history as a city manager. If, clearly you've worked around the state as a city manager, if you were applying to a city manager position, would that, would it be of interest to you that the information that you're giving in your application packet was going to the MML or a local group? I'm, I'm speaking specifically to the applicant pool. Do you feel there are people out there that would not apply without the confidentiality that the MML, or you think that's something that is of little concern to people?
Well, I, I think generally with some of your key candidates for positions, because they are in some cases working in other positions in other cities, they want to have some level of assurance that their information is going to be held in confidence until such time that they're actually invited in for an interview.
Ms. Rafferty, my understanding of the rules though, if a person requests that that be kept confidential, we have to keep it confidential regardless of whether MML does it or we do it. I know Elkanac did one on their own a few years back and they didn't use anybody. But, but I do know that if a person requests it, the community has to oblige by that rule. You cannot divulge that person if they request...
Right, and ideally, that's the way things should take place. However, there have been instances where information has been provided in other forums and as a result, the candidate's employer found out that they were a candidate for the position prematurely and it created some problems.
I think the difference would be they're dealing with one person as opposed to seven non-trained individuals. And so the, you know, the possibilities of leak, leakage of information is like seven times greater dealing with us than with an individual recruiter or facilitator. I think that would be the main advantage. Commissioner Hendrick?
I guess this isn't directed at Joyce here, but I have a question. I mean, if the MML is the way that we want to go, why didn't we use them to pick an interim city manager?
Because we had one in our ranks.
But he didn't have the experience.
Oh, I think that we really did, we had a discussion, I don't, we, and then we made a decision. So I don't know what that has to do with us.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, if you don't use them for one, but now you want to, I guess here's my question, I know there are other companies out there, so I'm wondering, are we going to bid this out or are we just going to go with one? I mean, there's other companies that do the same process. Are we just going to...
Well, that would be, I guess that would all be part of the discussion, but we have a guest here right now, so we should probably wrap up our questions to the guest. I'm also going to point out, we're going into executive session after this meeting or during this, at the end of this meeting, so I don't think you'd probably want to wait around for questions after the fact, that would be, so if anybody's got any questions, I'd fire away now. I just had a couple. What is the requirements to be a facilitator for MML? And is there any special training involved in that process?
There is training on an annual basis. There is a process where everything related to their searches, any issues that have come up, is evaluated with all of the facilitators. There's an initial process related to training. In terms of criteria, I think a big part of it relies heavily on the individual's skills and abilities in that regard and the network that's in place because most of the facilitators have served in the capacity of, as a city manager in other communities as well as have, having the educational background and experience. So for example, in, in my instance, as mentioned earlier, I've served in several cities in Michigan as a city manager as well as outside of Michigan and Illinois. Michigan as a city manager as well as outside of Michigan and Illinois. And I have a background in HR and labor relations. And I've served as an entrepreneur in reference to my own business and I've, I've worked through the state and other organizations.
And if we were, you know, if- If the commission made the decision to hire MML, I mean, would you be our facilitator? Or is that a process that's decided, you know, after the fact?
I would suspect that I'll be your facilitator unless there's something that comes up that would prevent me from doing it.
Basically, there, there's no guarantee on, there's one of five that we would get and that's a decision that MML makes, right? So do we have any ability to approve who is selected to be our facilitator based on their qualifications?
I don't believe so.
And I just have one more. When, what, at what point, I assume initially, any, any information we get is going to be redacted, we're not going to know the, the identity of the individual's sister qualifications?
Generally, the identity of the candidates are not provided other than either by letter or number until such time the final cut is completed and you're at a point where you're ready to interview the candidates.
That's all I had.
Just a moment. What, what was the biggest community that you were city manager, could I ask?
I was a city manager in Saginaw, Michigan. Elgin, Illinois. I was the assistant city manager in Jackson, Michigan. I was one of the administrators for the city of Flint. I've worked in Inkster, Michigan. I was the emergency manager in Allen Park, Ekor's, and also for school district. Yeah.
Any other questions? Alright, well, appreciate you coming out here tonight.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Thanks. I guess now, I guess we, I'd like to have a discussion on what we just heard and get some feedback from everyone else on what, how they think we should proceed. I mean, we did make the decision early on to do this on our own and I just thought that we didn't really have full information to make an informed decision, so now we have a little more information about what MML can do for us. Commissioner Avery?
Well, we see that there is a cost of approximately $10,000 and that is a decent sum of money, of course. However, we haven't looked to decide what cost would it be for us and our staff would probably not be able to do this, certainly without, without doing overtime or something. There, we should look to see what, what the cost of this is for us to do, knowing that we're starting out relatively fresh on this, where if we hire a firm, MML or somebody else, at least we know what we're getting and there is going to be a record. But obviously, there's a lot of work to this. You don't just put an ad in the paper, I think, and then sit back and wait to read resumes.
Yeah, I think the majority of the work's going to be involved in, you know, trying to qualify the candidates and sorting through all the resumes and, and, you know, whittling it down to a manageable number, you know, supposing that we do get a lot of candidates. And at that point, that's what our subcommittee's been charged to do, I believe. So it would be up to those people, right now, there's four of us in that. So I don't think there'd be a great deal of cost to the city other than the, the advertising.
And our time.
Well, our time is basically free. Yeah. I, I guess my main concern with this whole process was the, you know, just making sure that it was handled properly and, and that, you know, a professional was handling this and that the confidentiality of the candidates was being protected. And, you know, there's, we, you can ask our city attorney, but we, city attorney, but by doing this on our own, if something, you know, did happen, if we did leak somebody's information, we could be opening ourselves up to a lawsuit potentially, couldn't we?
I'm not sure that there's a liability that way, but I think, as Ms. Parker pointed out, I think that it, it, it probably damages the city's ability to track, attractive candidates if there's a fear that they may be subject to that.
So you don't think if somebody lost their job as a result of a leak of information, that there'd be some, they'd have some kind of standing in a lawsuit?
It's possible. I, I can't say that it's, it's impossible. I think people probably file claims for loss, but sure, I mean, it's, it's, that's part of the, that's part of the calculus, I think the commission has to discern here.
Commissioner Simpson?
I think the biggest concern for me would be, as Ms. Parker indicated, the anonymity of people applying for the position. I've been on four major searches, one when I was at Abilene College for a provost, it was a year and a half long, and two there for departmental staff, and then one at Macomb Community College plus staff that I've hired elsewhere. Two of those instances, we hired a similar, of course not MML, but a search firm, both different search firms. And another instance, we posted through the educational institution itself. And it was drastically different, the number of candidates and the quality of candidates we received going through the firm. And each and every individual that we followed up with indicated that they, they preferred the anonymity and the connections made through the search firm. That was kind of, the, the response we got is that's the way people do business. And, and I think that's something that we should really think about there. I think that's something that I would be potentially interested in pursuing. That, that's the biggest concern of mine is a qualified candidate pool. And I know a lot of people have applied for similar positions and I know many of them do not want their name out until they know that they're in the running. And that is a great concern and they, they're very strategic and oftentimes take a couple years before making a career move because of that. And that's-
How, how long ago was that most recent one you were involved with?
The most recent one was six years ago.
Do you, do you have any recollection of what the cost was of the company you hired?
And that educational institution, that was the, a year-long process and that was the exact, it was over $20,000, I want to say it was about $22,000. And that also tied up about six staff members as well as a portion of the student body. There was some open forums there with students, so they had input as well.
Commissioner Lovett?
Well, first of all, I would say that the Michigan Municipal League certainly has a footprint in, in the state of Michigan, well-known. Most municipalities, if not all, are members and have been trained through them, et cetera. And so they are the group that people look to if you're looking for a job, especially in the field of city administration. I don't know that our search would, could be as expanding, as expansive, I guess is the word I'm looking for, as what they would do. I wanted to also, you know, agree with Commissioner Simpson on the, the value of people being anonymous and not having to have their job in jeopardy because they might be looking elsewhere. You know, you know, maybe someone will find out eventually. And I also think that it would be very difficult if you had a number of local people who would apply, perhaps they're, you know, they too, now we get into personal feelings and personal ideas, whereas they too can apply directly to MML and not have to worry, you know, about favoritism or things like that, or at least look that way. So, you know, I think, you know, I certainly think that they would be a good choice.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Okay, I was out on the internet doing some research and I see the city of Novi last year had to do a search and they interviewed three other firms to look for a city manager. So I don't know if it would, they, this is a whole interview process they did at three different firms. I don't know if it would do us any good to at least contact them to find out prices?
Do you know who they hired or?
Yeah, well, there was Strategic Government Resources, Slaven Management Consultants, and Waters Executive Recruitment. They interviewed those three companies to do a city manager search for them. So I mean, it's just a thought.
I wouldn't be opposed to getting other prices, but I think as far as access to this candidate pool and else, probably got advantage on most of those others.
Well, what's nice about this is, this is their whole interview thing and you can read the questions and the, and the comments from each company, which was kind of interesting, of what they all offer and what they do. I'd be happy to share that if anybody wants to read it. Just, just throwing it out there.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Just one question. How did we get John Cape?
MML.
Through the MML?
Yeah.
Probably did.
About the last five, we've gotten through the MML. But, you know, reservations there, and that's why I say it's in the past.
So either going with MML or some other firm, a first step that we did, maybe you can refresh my memory, first step that we did was to form a subcommittee. What was the task of this subcommittee that we outlined?
Our task was going to be basically to review these resumes, was our main task, and to, to help develop the, the advertisement and the job qualifications.
So pretty much to try to set up the same steps that MML was talking about here?
Yeah, basically, yeah, I don't know, we're, we're going to do the, the same thing, we're going to follow the same-
Similar.
Similar, you know, procedures. Yeah, the, the difference is we're, you know, elected officials as opposed to-
Sure.
-dedicated professional.
Yeah. How's the progress been so far? Have we had a meeting yet?
We do have, we, we do, that's the next item on the agenda. We do have the job description announcement, draft of that, to present to the entire board for, you know, your scrutiny and approval, if that's what you wanted to do. And then, once that was completed, then we could post the job and start advertising. We haven't posted or started advertising yet.
But we didn't sit down as a committee to create that?
No, we, we didn't because actually, the advice that the chief and I have gotten from other people is that we should do that as a, as, as a whole commission. That we shouldn't take that process-
Guess what I was leading up to was, if that subcommittee establishes the same type of criteria here and tries it on their own for a while, see what type of success you have. If after 30 days or whatever, it's not working out, at least we know we attempted that, we need to step up and get professional help at that point. Just a thought.
No, I, I hear you.
Okay.
As, as one of the persons on that subcommittee, I'm just telling you, I feel, I feel it could be in better hands, let's just put it that way.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're not qualified recruiters or-
Right.
-you know, HR people or whatever. It's not our jobs.
That's true.
Okay.
And if we continue to interview others, which is not necessarily a bad idea, it's just that's another two weeks or more, it's another meeting, and then another meeting, and another meeting. And I know Chief Tillery doesn't want to be in this position forever, you know, I just think the sooner we do make a decision and move forward.
Yeah, I guess that's a key point, you know, as opposed to our, our volunteer subcommittee that's going to, we're, we're going to meet when we can.
Right.
We would have a dedicated professional that would be working on this, you know, as I would, I would think pretty much full-time, because that's their job, that's what they're trying to do, so.
And I think one of the key things is the way they can advertise for the position as opposed to what we-
Well, not only that, but just every single city manager or, you know, that's in, just about anybody in the city government knows MML and they know the organization and they have connections. And I don't know, I just think, I, I think there's a, I mean, obviously, because I brought this to your attention, I think there's a good reason to consider this.
Like I said, I, I don't know how far our subcommittee has gotten in terms of advertising or reaching out.
We, we have not advertised-
Right, right.
And we, and we haven't actually communicated yet.
Mr. Mayor, what I meant to say was, what method you might have established yet as to how you will reach out, if you're not, hopefully not just our website, because it, it's not a popular website, I'm sure.
No, we, we'd be advertising pretty much on MML-
Okay.
-and a couple other sites is where we'd be posting our ad.
Well, then, if they allow that to happen, you're, you're getting it for free.
Well, no, you, you, I think we have to pay for that, don't we?
Yeah, yes, sir. Okay. I guess what I'm, what I'm proposing is, you know, do you want to continue to let our subcommittee take an attempt at this, or do we just decide that, you know, maybe that's not the right avenue?
Well, so far, nobody's made a motion to do anything, so if we don't make a motion to do anything-
Open discussion at this point.
We would be basically just proceeding on as we've already decided to proceed, so. Commissioner Hendrick?
And there's nothing, there's, isn't any reason why we couldn't call a special meeting if we had to instead of waiting two weeks all the time? There's, there's nothing that says we can't do that as long as we get the proper notice. So I don't see that that's an issue.
In what regard?
In regard to waiting two weeks every time we have a commission meeting, you can always call a special meeting between-
Well, no, our, our subcommittee, you know, this regional forum of subcommittee can meet whenever we want.
But I'm talking for the whole committee. If, if the subcommittee comes up with something, there's no reason why we couldn't call a special meeting so that the commission could move it forward and approve this stuff faster than waiting every two weeks for a regular meeting, is what I'm saying.
No, we can always have special meetings, it's not a problem.
Our perception would be that. Again, your personal schedules, obviously, but whenever that subcommittee can get together and try to put this outline in place and figure out how they're going to advertise and then come back to us, you know, we would, at that point, approve that, so. But you guys can't meet every day, you know, obviously, you got personal lives.
No, but I think we got to have some meeting, we, we haven't-
Well, that's what I was asking, I mean, how far have you gotten so far?
Yeah, so far, we haven't advertised, so there really hasn't been-
No, no, I mean in terms of meeting as a subcommittee and putting together the outlines.
We've had one meeting, yeah. Okay. Yeah. And that was last Friday?
Friday.
Okay. So, kind of my point, we're all busy people with our own lives, so we're going to meet when we can all get together and-
My point too.
You know, being one of those busy people that has to meet on the subcommittee, I, I'm like willing to do it because I volunteered to be on the subcommittee, but I'm also thinking maybe we could use a hand.
I agree.
Commissioner Avery?
I assume, listening to this, that the subcommittee will still be the first connection with MML if we were to hire them. So the, the recommendations would go to the committee, that would be then, and then it would come-
I don't, I don't know how, how necessary that would be, because just in the conversations I've had with people involved in this process, it's better for most information to come to the full commission. Because if you have people making, you know, not, we can't really make decisions because we're a subcommittee, but if we're limiting your access to information, then you might not feel fully a part of the process. And that could actually cause delays or, or problems, so that's the other thing. The, the full benefit of the subcommittee, I'm not even sure it's there because just from people that have been involved in this process multiple times, I think it's kind of a mistake for the subcommittee to be handling a lot of these issues, that most of this should come to the full commission. Because like I said, you, you'll end up with people who don't feel like they were part of the process or haven't had enough information, so I don't know. You got anything to add?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that struck me when you and I were doing the research on this is the list of warnings from everyone I spoke to about the confidentiality, about the applicant pool, about the subcommittee is a good thing for very, very small things, but everything should be in front of the board as a whole. And the, the, there were so many things that were brought to our attention during these meetings that I, my recommendation is to go with a professional firm.
I'd have to say that's my recommendation also.
Could I ask a question? Typically, when you're working with the community, do you establish a single point of contact or would you have to, as you need to get more information or relay what you're proceeding with, would you have to deal with this entire board on a bi-weekly basis or would you have a single point of contact to communicate with?
Yeah, as far as assimilating information-
Right.
-getting it to the commission, I would have maybe a single point of contact for that purpose. But as far as reviewing the information, it's better to review it with the entire commission.
Okay.
And just one other comment, since you asked me a question.
Sure, please.
There was some discussion about potentially having the committee and the city advertise the position and if it doesn't work out, then potentially taking a look at MML or another firm to step in. Generally, that may hurt your pool of candidates.
Okay.
So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Commissioner Avery?
Just a procedural question. What advance notice do we have to give to have a special meeting?
Eighteen hours?
Yeah.
Is that?
Eighteen hours.
That it? Okay, so, so it can be done very quickly then?
Can be done very quickly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovett?
Okay, I'm trying to move this along and make a motion that we, um, hire the municipal league to, um, do the search for our, uh, city manager.
Just a point of order here, would, would we have to have a motion to waive competitive bidding also?
That would be part of it, yes.
Yeah. Does that have to be part of the original motion?
Yes, it does.
So you'd have to include that in your original motion? You'd have to include in your motion to waive competitive bidding if you're suggesting that we vote on hiring.
And to waive the competitive, competitive bidding. That's, yes.
So a motion on the floor, do we have support? Well, I'll, I'll give you support on that one. So a motion, support, any, any further discussion? Commissioner Simpson?
I wouldn't be opposed to hearing, uh, what other search firms might have to offer. Um, I certainly, my gut instinct would, would think that the MML is, would definitely be the way to go. Um, but the high dollar amount attached to it and since there are varying opinions around, I, um, I don't think it ever hurts to see what our options are. Obviously, I, I agree that time is a concern and we would like to maybe have some sort of, um, format by the next meeting, hopefully, even if it's something written down that we could then vet further if we wish. Um, but just to sort of see if the pricing's comparable, if process is somewhat comparable. Um, that would be my concern and, and preference.
Mr. Hendrick?
Um, I was gonna suggest before the motion was made that maybe the subcommittee could meet. I could try to contact some of these companies, get some prices. We could all sit down and discuss it and then bring the, all of it back to the board at the next meeting. That way, at least we, at least we made the attempt to look at every avenue that we have.
Oh, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I mean, we could make a motion to table the motion, can't we?
The motion could also be withdrawn.
Yeah, you can withdraw your motion or we can, someone else can make a motion to table it. I mean, would you be opposed to that since you've made the original motion, uh, that we, at least researched?
No, I, I, I would stay with this one right now. I really think that, um, you know, the municipal league has certainly, um, you know, has the, the star power, as it were. The, um, visual power and they, they've done this and that's what they're all about is, uh, you know, municipal, municipalities and.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, uh, but personally, I have a feeling what would, would happen is we would, you know, contact other firms and, and, um, probably come around to the same decision at some point, which would just delay the process by a couple of weeks, which, uh, Mr. Tillery probably wouldn't mind. But it, it, well, you know, it, it will just, I, my personal opinion is it would just stretch things out. Uh, Commissioner Hendrick?
Um, so let me say this. So let's say the committee meets, we try to do this as quickly as possible, get as much information, and we have a special meeting before that meeting and, and we make the meeting just strictly for hiring, whatever, which means we can draft up a resolution and the whole bit. We can do it faster than that.
So do you wanna make a motion to table this motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
Wouldn't it be to postpone?
Or postpone? Yeah.
Correction.
Is there any support for that motion?
Support.
So a motion, support to postpone? Uh, any discussion, any further discussion on this?
Just the one, I, I think this is a good idea, because I don't see a reason why we should waive our bid, our normal bid process when it's not that difficult.
Okay. Anyone else?
I support this, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, so this has been postponed.
Okay, so the next question is how soon do you wanna meet for this?
Oh, well, we can, we can meet next week, I guess we pick a day.
And in the meantime, I'll see if I can't contact.
I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a date that works for everybody.
Talking about your subcommittee meeting?
The subcommittee, okay.
And then in the meantime, I'll try to contact any of these companies, see what I can get out of them.
Right, Commissioner Hendrick has suggested that subcommittee vet out a couple of different
Right.
uh, firms that, that provide a similar service. And then we come back to you with a recommendation at a different meeting.
Sounds like a good idea.
Either a special meeting or, uh, or the next meeting. I think it could probably wait till the next meeting. So we'll, uh, amongst the subcommittee members, we'll find a date to meet next week and we'll go through this.
At least you, you know, e- even if it only takes a couple of weeks, you've at least explored the avenue, you know? And if the pricing is the same, then we make the right decision, so. I'm, I'm against waiving competitive bidding myself, so.
Well, at this point, it's, it's being postponed, so.
Okay.
It should be in good shape. Anything else on the subject before we move on? Okay, moving on to item nine B, which is, uh, review of the city manager job description and announcement. This is, uh, something that, uh, I've had some input on. Commissioner Hendrick's had some input on it, uh, mostly drafted by, uh, Chief Tillery. So he's, we brought it here today for you to peruse. Hopefully, you've read it a little bit before now, but if you haven't, we can go through it and discuss it. I, you know, read it thoroughly and I think it's a good, uh, I think it's a good document at this point. I don't have any other suggestions. Commissioner Simpson?
Uh, I agree. I feel the document's good as in place. I was just curious as far as process, did we take an existing, uh, description and adapt that? Uh, just more of curiosity than anything?
Um, I may or may not have stolen some of the information.
Okay. Which is good, and I would argue that that would be even typical and, and good procedure. I was just curious if this, um, um.
Couldn't borrow, be, borrow would be a better word.
Acquired.
Uh, it's, it's all original, as far as I know. There's no plagiarism here. Is it, anyone else? Got any, Commissioner Hendrick?
Um, I have a couple things. On the second page, it says, um, at least three years progressively responsible experience in local government or significant private sector information. So I know, we talked about this and I went into the, to the, um, charter and it says that the person shall be selected on the basis of his executive and administrative qualifications and must have special training in the field. I'm assuming the field means in government, correct? Or previous experience as a city manager or as an assistant city manager. So my only concern is to, the comment in here that says, "or significant private sector managerial experience." Um, because the problem with that is people think one way in private sector and government's totally different and, and the things that you can and cannot do. So I would like to stick with this being that they need to have experience as a city manager, some type of government here. But I guess then on top of this, we probably won't use this in the, in the event we hire a firm, because they're gonna go through this again.
Well, they, but they, they, if we hire a firm, they would be developing that document with us, so I, I think we would just have a, a jump on the process here. And, uh, they would look at what we have and probably make suggestions is probably what that would look like.
Because then in the next bullet, it says, "if no experience, the candidate should explain in detail the special training he or she possesses to successfully perform the job." I'm concerned about that also.
Well, I think the, the benefit here of kind of broadening the categories, it doesn't, you know, ham us in. I mean, we can always say no to any applicant, but, but to, to restrict our, uh, pool, you know, and the off, offset might be, uh, just, it might not be a good thing, I mean.
Okay, and the other comment, seek out grant opportunities. I would ask if we could put seek out or possibly write grants, if we can find somebody that's a grant writer. There's people out there that do that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, other than that, I was wondering if we could add a couple of things for, um, I found in another posting, "for most critical skills to be a city manager. Strong commitment to ethical standards and conduct. Use themselves as partners with the city commission by fully disclosing and sharing information and engaging the commission. Strong customer focus and deep belief in stewardship as a public servant and assisting citizens to enjoy the community." And then the fourth one is professional skills, sense of humor, sense of common and interest in investing in the community, being out and about as part of it. I, I'd just like to know if we could add that.
I wouldn't be opposed to any of those comments.
I'll, I'll give that to you.
I mean, I think he, he's, you know, in a roundabout way, he's touched on most of that stuff in here, maybe not quite specifically, but.
What was in, what I was thinking when I think this is our copy and paste part of it. The, the paragraph under candidate qualifications is a quote right, right from our ordinance. That is the qualification to be the city manager. However, it's so broad that then the bullets underneath were just, uh, if you look, it says additionally, they may be considered. So I added those bullets underneath to exactly what you're talking about, given the flavor, this is what we're looking for. So here, that's exactly where that, that belongs.
Yeah, I mean, any process, you're gonna get, you're gonna get people, you know, apply that aren't qualified and, I mean, you just gotta go through and weed it out, you know? But you might find a couple of gems in there too.
There'll be Brian Williams for sure.
You know, so. Commissioner Lovett? You look like you got, you're ready to say something?
No, I, I gave my comments to the, uh, chief as, uh, you cast it off to.
Anybody else have any suggestions on the wording here or changes to it? Okay, well, I don't believe there's any action required at this point.
No, sir. I'll make those additions.
Do you mind a motion?
No.
No, there's no, no need, I mean, when we, this was a draft document. I guess at the next meeting, we'll have a, a finished document. And I guess we could decide whether or not that's gonna be our job posting at that point.
Or at the same meeting, we decide we're gonna go with a headhunter, you can.
Right, yeah, we do it together, cause.
We might be redoing it anyways.
Right. So if everyone's happy with that, we can move on. All right, on to, uh, nine C, which is, uh, director of, uh, public works employment agreement.
Your honor, may I make a, a preparatory comment on items, uh, C and D, uh, these contracts? I learned today that they were not made a part of a packet that was mailed out to you in advance at tonight's meeting, and that is my fault, uh, and I apologize for the, the short time you've had to, to review those. Uh, is the, the commission's aware, there are several confidential attorney-client, uh, communications that came from both myself and from, uh, attorney Gary Francis. And, uh, I was, uh, trying to be mindful, uh, in speaking to Mr. Tillery about the, the confidentiality of those documents. And I think that there was a, a misunderstanding that I take the blame for that didn't allow the, the contract documents to be a part of, of your packet. But, uh, and I, I referenced that, because Commissioner Melli, uh, mentioned me before the meeting. He, uh, was interested in knowing whether or not, uh, these, uh, proposed, uh, agreements were fait accompli or whether the, the terms could be negotiated tonight. And I told him if there was a question about into the terms, that this is the form in which to do it. Uh, I was simply given a term sheet as to both of these contracts and was simply the scrivener of the, uh, of the, uh, items that I was given. So I, again, I think it's, uh, the, the commission's duty tonight to, to ferret out the particulars on this and if the documents, uh, appear in order as drafted, then they should be approved. And if there's any changes that need to be made, those should be discussed and, and voted on as well.
All righty. So, yeah, I mean, I received the email, was it yesterday? Or today? And I did read it, um, I did read everything. I had my, did my homework this afternoon, read everything. Does anybody, has everyone else had a chance to read it or is this?
No.
Is this something we want to?
I was told, said, there that I was gonna receive the email. Unfortunately, when I got home, the heat is out. I had to take care of that issue first. It's a personal thing, but I have not had a chance to see these.
Would you like more time to review this?
I would.
So, Commissioner Hendrick?
I have a couple of questions though, two in here. Um, I know in some contracts, I've seen things as far as like, uh, the phone stipend and, uh, whether he gets life insurance or, um, you know, that type of thing. Or does it just revolve to the regular procedures? Whatever the regular employees get, he's getting. I, I guess usually on contracts like this, they're a little bit more specific on what he's, does he get clothing allowance? Because he used to get that with the union, now he doesn't, so are we giving him a clothing allowance?
The, the answer is anything that's, that's, uh, he, he gets nothing that's not contained in the agreement.
So those type of things, maybe we need to look at whether we need to include them or not.
Correct.
Was, uh, Mr. Ettrich at all involved in this?
My understanding, he was. Um, I was, my contact for this was, uh, Ms. McDonald. And I believe that, uh, again, the terms came out of the meeting that he had had with, uh, Mr. Tillery and Ms. McDonald.
He was involved, your honor, and he's reviewed it. He signed off on this contract, you'll see a signature on there. There, there might, very well have been some things from this on my, he would.
Well, that sounds to me like you're, you're talking about enhancing the contract.
Well, I, I know he's used to getting that today and maybe he didn't think about that because he was a union person, now he's not gonna be in the union, so he's not gonna be entitled to those things, even though. I, I, I'm just, I just wanna make sure that he, you know, the phone stipend, none of that's in here. And we normally offer that to, you know. I'm not saying I wanna give out stuff, but I, I just wanna make sure he was aware that those type of things aren't in there before he just signed it.
Well, he already signed it.
Well, I know, but did he think of those things before he signed it? Is, is my question.
That's up to Mr. Ettrich. I, I, I mean, to me, it looked like pretty much, uh, he was getting most of the benefits that are entitled to all of our employees, in the looks of it.
Well, hang on, let me see. I got one from, just curious, I got John's old one, just some of the stuff in here. Um, he gets medical, dental, vision care, um, life insurance. His, what kind of paid leave and disability retirement, uh, unless that goes back to the stuff. I mean, he's got a lot of stuff, John has a lot of stuff in his contract.
Well, that, that was a little more, I, I believe there's, uh, a paragraph in here. It says basically he's entitled to all the rights and privileges and as far as employee policy goes, which would include him in all that stuff. It's kind of an all-encompassing thing, so.
Of course, addresses that.
Right.
Okay, well, I guess.
And then my lease, et cetera, but there's no, no mention of a telephone, so. That's probably in the personnel.
The telephone's not in the personnel, that, that wasn't oversight. Department has generally had a cell, a cellphone stipend and that was an oversight on my part.
Life insurance and, and clothing allowance too. He's used to getting all his clothing through the union. I mean, we, we had to purchase it.
The, the life insurance, I know is part of the, uh, regular package. Well, we have a, uh, you know, Mayor Proton Turner's not happy with, uh, the time that he's had to even look at this, so I don't know if, wants to make a motion to postpone or make recommendations maybe to bring this.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to postpone and request that, that the, uh, city manager go back and make sure that some of these other issues he's aware of and. Support, take care of it.
So we have a motion and support, any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so it's been postponed. I'm moving on to, uh, item eight, uh, nine D, which would be the acting city manager compensation agreement. Now, this is something that your subcommittee was involved with. We sat down with, uh, Chief Tillery last Friday and we, uh, did a lot of, uh, haggling, a little arm wrestling, some stuff. And, and we came up with this, uh, figure and this, uh, agreement to bring to the board. Uh, we did all agree on it at the meeting, uh, all involved. Uh, the basis of it, uh, essentially, it started out to be just to compensate him at the level that our former city manager was being compensated. In other words, we didn't try to compensate for the combination of the two jobs. Uh, my initial recommendation was that I thought it was fair to just basically cap, compensate him at the level of city manager, since I didn't think he'd really be doing that much more work than maybe what a city manager would be doing initially. And he, Mr. Tillery, you know, he would, obviously was in agreement with the final figure, which is a little bit higher than the initial one I proposed. Not significantly higher, but a little bit higher. So if there's any, uh, anybody that'd like to make a motion at this point?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
I make a motion that we accept the employment agreement between the city of Marine City and Donald G. Tillery for this interim support.
Okay, we have motion, support. Any discussion, questions? Uh, Commissioner Melli?
Yeah, um, I do have a problem, I'm looking at this compensation and that's considerably a lot higher, especially when, uh, Mr. Gable, when he left, he said this is gonna be a part-time. Mr. Gaber, when he left, he said this is gonna be a part-time, and he is working still as assisting chief, and he's also working here, so it's not like you're two people. And I, that's a sizable raise that we're looking at another $800 a week, and to me, that is quite a bit. I would like to cut that in half and have that only $400 a week more for compensation instead of $800 a week.
Well, all I can...
I just look at it that if I said if a person was being paid $10 an hour for 40 hours, okay, and Mr. Gaber said, oh, no, this would be a part-time job, so you're not working 40 hours, but I'm just saying at 40 hours plus, you're working 40 hours as...
Just, I'll just make some points, make sure you're not confused. We're not talking about in addition to his pay. This would be his total pay.
Right.
And it is not a part-time position. He's actually working full-time. His prior position was part-time.
Right. His prior position was part-time.
Now, now he's working...
But Mr. Gaber was emphasizing that this is as a city, incumbent as a city manager, it'd be like a part-time, so in other words, Don could do it as a full-time job, doing both jobs as a full-time job. But what I'm saying is that if his wages was 1,100 a week, and now you're tacking on almost $900 more, I'm saying that I would like to cut that compensation in half, 'cause I am, we are giving him other benefits.
No, you're not.
I thought, we're not giving you extra...
No.
Nothing, no.
Healthcare?
No.
I thought we were giving you...
No, what we did, what we did, Commissioner Melli, is we took the, what would be the dollar value of the pension and the healthcare, and we add that into that, that's part of that salary. We're not actually giving him those benefits, but he is being compensated more closer to what a full-time position is. Chief Tillery is hourly presently. He gets paid by the hour. This is a salary. This is a fixed rate, so if he works 50 hours a week or 60 hours a week, it's gonna be the same rate of pay. Obviously, because I helped develop this money, I'm in favor of it, but, you know, you're entitled to your own opinion, of course. But I'm just, if you look at the present job that Chief Tillery has, he is running two departments on his own, and the end savings to the city is over $50,000. So if he was to continue in this position at this salary for 12 months, the city would realize the $50,000 savings or more. It's actually more than 50,000, but I'm not gonna give you the exact number. It's in that ballpark, between 50 and 60,000. We'll see as a savings as a result of that.
Okay, that's looking at if that was a whole year.
Right.
But we're not looking at it as a whole year. We're only looking at three months.
How do you want it, three months?
Well, I thought you said 90 days or approximately.
Well, so then you could take that number and divide it by four if it's only three months. Still, no matter what happens from this point forward, this does represent a savings to the city. The dollar amount will be, depend on the length of time, but he is providing, he is running two departments, basically at a salary that was being, at our last city manager's salary, essentially, is what that equals out to. But he still does not get healthcare. He does not get pension. The only thing that we did say that he'd be entitled to be paid holidays, since he would be a full-time employee. That's the only additional benefit outside of the salary that we agreed to.
So in other words, maybe I'm not understanding. This is a little bit more than what we were paying Gaber in a sense? John? Because he's doing two jobs, does technically this is a little bit more?
It's slightly more. I think the number I originally came up with when I did the math was 1,950. So it's $50 more than the initial math we did at the meeting.
Means $200 a month difference.
There was, there was a negotiation involved. I mean, a lower number was presented that was not accepted fully, and like in any discussion like that, went back and forth a little bit. And as a group, we came to this number and to bring to the commission for your consideration. That's exactly what happened. Mayor Proton?
I've had time to read this one since you guys have been discussing. I'd like to make the motion that we approve this employment agreement addendum that has been very well thought out at this time.
There's already a motion and a support on the floor.
Yeah, we already made a motion. We're in the discussion.
But there is a question.
Commissioner Simpson?
I just wanna essentially reiterate, my hand's been up for a while, but I trust that the subcommittee has done the work that we've charged them with. I think the price is more than fair, and again, to reiterate, it is definitely a cost savings. So I think that when we have subcommittees and committees, we need to respect that they've done the work diligently that we've entrusted them with. And also, Commissioner Melli spoke to, a reference to a part-time position. That was an option that Mr. Gaber gave to us, but certainly two meetings ago, after hearing the community response, we decided that it was not a part-time position. Certainly, the city manager's position will remain a full-time position, as we discussed, unless we change something moving forward. And that's where the part-time, and again, that was an option that the city manager gave us.
Here regardless of that, running two departments is not a part-time job.
Yeah, but I just wanted to clarify that, since it was brought up in case someone at home may have had the same understanding, so.
Commissioner Hendrick?
All right, I was on the committee, and I was in there during this discussion, and I know this figure came up, and I went with the board, but I also made a comment in there that I still felt that the community went, they went by this figure, and that when it comes to the vote, I couldn't support this.
Do we have any other...
And are we gonna set any hours? I guess I wondered if we're gonna have any set hours. I noticed that in the other contract.
I think it's addressed in the document, and it expressly says there are no set hours, but that he's going to endeavor to do what's needed to achieve both jobs objectives.
I guess my only concern with that, because we didn't really discuss that, is that when, if people don't know where you are at what time, I'm kinda concerned that if people need to get ahold of you, if we had some way to say, if it's possible, you can be here at certain times so that people know where you are, you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying, man. We've been coordinating, and both offices know where I'm at all the time, and most people have my cellphone.
I'm more concerned about people in the community.
What are you, what are you suggesting? Start, start and quit times or daily?
Well...
So many hours a week?
Like four hours or some. Four hours you're at this place, and the rest of the time you're at this place. Just something so that people have, like I said, idea that they know, hey, he's gonna be here, I can get in there, and I can talk to him. Otherwise, I don't think they're gonna know where you are. You know what I'm saying? I just wanna make sure you're accessible to the community.
I know exactly what you mean. That has happened a couple times, and I'm a minute, literally two minutes away, probably. I went back and forth. I'll be over at the city hall somewhere, the police department looking for me, and I make there in about two minutes. So it has, it has been working, just responding to whoever I'm needed.
I think as a, you know, person who's been a salary employee for a long time, I could say that salary is, gives you the benefit to work as many hours as you want, basically. You end up working many more hours than an hourly person normally does. But the, we also have the ability to terminate this agreement at any time. It's written right in the agreement, so if we feel that Chief Tillery's not holding up his end of the bargain, we can end this agreement at any time.
Commissioner Hendrick, correct me if I'm wrong, your questions seem to be directed more, how many hours was he gonna spend in, on Water Street as opposed to Parker Street, right? Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure people know he's gonna be there somewhere, 'cause some people don't feel comfortable at the police department. But I just wanna know if we had some type of way that they know, hey, he's gonna be there, I can go in and deal with an issue with him and...
Would you be opposed to posting like your available hours during the week?
No, I would not.
Or maybe try to establish a certain, two, three days a week, I'll be at this location.
Yeah, try to help the routine.
Yeah, I mean, guaranteed you'd be accessible at those, those periods of time, you know, borrowing, you know, some personal...
Meetings or whatever.
This is kind of a unique situation.
Yeah, I have found it to be very difficult to be, there's a lot of meetings. And I'm out of town often in Port Huron with the meetings, so I will, I will try to come up, I'll try to devise some sort of plan to let people know.
I think I understand Commissioner Hendrick's concern, though. If people wanna get in touch with the city manager, how do they know when he's gonna be there? You know, in the past, they could assume the city manager is gonna be in the city manager's office.
That's right.
I have a schedule, they can always check with me.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, I think with, very valid concern, but I think out of a matter of professional courtesy, if I wanna see any other businessperson or anyone, I would call to make an appointment or an email, you know, and certainly if there's an emergency, I would hope that, you know, they respond quicker than others. But I think we need to, you know, allow, make citizens, you know, have some sort of point of contact first. I mean, if he's dealing with an emergency at the PD, and someone comes in with an issue with a water bill that might not be due for two weeks, well, certainly, I think the PD needs to take precedence, regardless of how many hours he was at one building, but that's a level of courtesy that any adult should offer another adult is, you know, a value of their time. And furthermore, I think as a citizen, I would want to have a dedicated time to deal with that. I wouldn't wanna have to feel rushed, so I would hope that I could make an appointment. On the other end of things, I think to me, that's much, much better way to deal with it.
But I think the thing is, is if you have a set time, then they know within that time, they can make an appointment. See what I'm saying?
But I think an appointment is just that, you know? What if someone wants an evening appointment as well? It works both ways. An appointment is a mutually agreed-upon time, so I don't think to have a window...
Yeah, I mean, this, this interim position's gonna be more challenging, you know, than, than our full-time city manager when we do hire one, so I'm sure Chief Tillery will make every accommodation to meet with people, but, yeah, I agree. Commissioner Simpson, if you really wanna see someone, you should make an appointment. Now, if you have hours that you're normally there posted, so if they happen to pop in on a whim, I mean, the city's not very big, so it's easy just to pop in. At least they might have some chance of running into you. I guess that would be not too unreasonable.
Well, how about if Chief Tillery gives us his suggestion on this, then give it some thought, what works out best for you. Obviously, you're in a unique situation. You've gotta handle two jobs for us on an interim basis, and if you can establish a schedule that works to where you can make yourself available to the public on appointment, these are the best hours to meet with me. Something along those lines?
I will put that out.
Okay.
Anything else?
One more item.
Commissioner Melli?
Yeah, when you were saying that if you're tied up with the city as the manager, that Officer Heslop would take over as assistant chief, are we gonna compensate him because he'd be doing more responsibility?
Lieutenant Heslop is on a, Lieutenant Heslop is on a union contract, so his compensation is set.
He's already got a compensation then for the...
It's, it's a larger union contract, so to, yes, it's already set.
Okay, so he's already being compensated? Okay, I didn't know.
Not for any additional work. He is just, he's the lieutenant, and that's what he makes, and by me being in this position, it didn't change that.
Oh, okay, I thought...
No additional compensation.
Thank you.
So, anything else?
I'd just like to press the roll call vote for that.
I was gonna go ahead with the roll call vote. We have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Melli?
No.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatari?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board. Moving on to item nine E, which is a revised calendar for our budget meeting dates. Sorry, any...
Just a question. What was the reason for the revision?
One of our department had to miss their date.
Oh.
To turn in their budget, and that threw everything killywumpus.
Gotcha.
Okay, anything else on that? So I guess we just need to agree to the changes, if it works with everybody's schedule.
We make it work.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Yes.
So want to make a motion to accept the changes?
Make a motion to accept the preliminary budget review date as presented.
Support.
We have motion and support. Do we have any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have your new dates. Onto item nine F, which is adopt ordinance number 01, 2015, which is water supply cross connection ordinance.
I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance for the water supply cross connection.
Support.
Motion is support. Do we have any discussion on this?
Your Honor, this is, this is something that's required by the state, and our city attorney was instrumental in drafting this. I think it's not, certainly the DPW director supports it, and our city attorney drafted it. This is to meet new rules and requirements from the state.
Yeah, we either, we have to adopt this, basically, for something like it, so...
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance has been adopted. We have no new business, so we're moving on to item 11, which is financial business.
Make a motion of...
Financial statements.
I'm going to approve, accept and file the preliminary financial statements as presented.
Support.
Motion is support. Is there any questions on the financial statements? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to the city manager's report.
One of the, first thing I'd like to address, Your Honor, is the police department now is using crime mapping. When we went to our new report management system, every single thing we do at the police department now is mapped onto a crime map that we have implemented. It's being tested right now, and we're in a month testing phase. You can see when the system is completely up and running in a month, you bring up our city, and every place that we have taken a report pops up with a little bubble. This will be open to all the citizens. They can look to see whether a crime in their neighborhood, the crime in their city. I'll pass these around. There's one of them that shows you a legend on there. It shows everything, and it'll be accessible right on our website. It's a, it's a pretty cool tool. It's, it's something that we've been looking forward to. Training has been completed, and we're now in the testing phase of the Clemens crime mapping. We sent some people down to be designers for the system, and we are, we're excited about that. I attended the Tifa budget workshop in my office. Tifa is moving ahead with their budget, and everything went well. I conducted social media training with a clerk, where she, myself, and Elizabeth McDonald, or originally she and myself, and then she helped Elizabeth McDonald. We have now set up a Marine City webpage. Not only is there a Marine City police page, but there is a social media presence now for the city. The blog is marinesityblog.wordpress.com. The Facebook page is City of Marine City, and there are several pages called City of Marine City. It will be the one with the official city logo next to it that says government organization. And the Twitter account is at Marine City MI. Read and city and MI are canceled, are capitalized. The blog, the setup is the same as the police department. The blog pushes to the Facebook and the Twitter page, so anything we post on our blog is automatically posted on the Twitter and Facebook account. Clerk's office has already been using it for daily announcements and tax, I think put the tax info on it.
Tax info, I'll put on there also that the dog licenses are coming up to an end at the end of February in the city offices. We posted on the blog and Facebook a link for the residences that should run the water that are in danger of pipes freezing, things like that.
So, I mean, like the friends page, is that open to everybody, public? So they, anybody can make, you know, they're posted on there and whatever?
No, not everybody can comment on it. Everybody can see it.
See it, okay.
It's more of one-way information.
So it's not an interactive tool?
They can't go complain in there.
They, they can post on it, and it'll go to the administrator who will look at the post and decide if it should be up. But it is, it's more of a one-way information sharing device at this point. Um, I attended the planning commission meeting. Uh, everything went well there, and the planning commission is moving ahead with the new master plan, or to work on the new master plan. Um, I attended the Saint Clair County Chiefs meeting, and, uh, in Marysville, uh, the project for the Stone Garden grant is moving ahead there. Um, we've had several meetings regarding our new hotel project. This morning I met, had the blue, blue meets green meeting. Uh, Mike Hilfinger and myself were there to represent the project for the team. Uh, the project was adopted by the county as the number two project in the county for their prioritized list. Um, I've met with Nate Scramblin from the Michigan Economic Development Corps on some issues that we're looking at getting some assistance with, and Jeff Bohm, the, the county chairperson of the commission, and, uh, Mike Hilfinger and I and myself were in communication today to work on a brownfield, further brownfield assistance with the project. Um, the Tifa meeting has been adjourned to February twenty-third of last week. Um, we're moving ahead with the budget process. Uh, we did DPW, and the clerk's office is complete. I met with the, uh, Saint Clair County health officials regarding law, I'm sorry, raw water monitoring from the river. We're going to jump back into a program where we are taking the raw water that comes in from the river at our water plant, and it will be analyzed at SC four right now to get a better, um, idea up and down the river, what's happening with our water. Um, there's been no incidents or no issues yet, we just want to make sure we keep an eye on it. Mike Ittrich is also coordinating the SC four to make the delivery of the samples. Um, I had a new police officer, Andy Kreiner from Saint Clair. Um, I would like to remind everybody of the preliminary budget review dates, March twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth. And I would like to remind everyone that we are doing official photographs for the website for the commissioners at between five-thirty and six-thirty on March nineteenth at the, uh, in the city manager's office.
If you don't show up, do you get like a funny face?
I've got a picture for those who don't show up, all set.
Like they used to do in the high school yearbook, say just put, write a caricature in there?
Yeah.
Over the hours again?
Between five-thirty and six-thirty.
I got it right here. Five-thirty and six-thirty, March nineteenth. I sent, I have a copy of the email if anybody needs it.
Each one of you have an email in your Marine City box over that.
And I have a reminder for the budgets if anybody needs that, too.
Busy restoring heat in the home today, so didn't get emails.
Should've called the mayor.
Yeah, I've been getting a few of those calls. A little, a little busy.
I was told to call home before I leave, and if it's not on, bring the mayor home with you.
Oh, jeez, you know, it's like quadruple time.
Yeah, I know.
After a meeting.
Cold beer in the fridge. Real cold.
So does that wrap up the, uh...
That is, that wraps up the city manager's report, sir.
That's a good report, I appreciate that one. Uh, Mr. Mellon, I think we'll start with you tonight.
I'm just saying.
Mayor Proton, Paul Seid, thanks.
Real fast, I promise. Now, I just want to say, I'm, I'm sorry I couldn't say that when they left, but Judy White has done so much for the city, especially with the music festival and the Klingers as well. Um, they've, they've done many things, but this is just outstanding to have that summer program going, and David, thank you very much for working with them also. And then the other thing is, we always complain about the people who don't shovel their sidewalks, and they're still not shoveling their sidewalks. But a thank you to those people who have, and there's cold weather and all the snow that we've had, number of people have gotten out in there and at least tried to get some kind of path through that snow, so thank you, to you as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I'm gonna tell something, sorry. Um, we've had a lot of emergency water breaks where people couldn't get a hold of anybody. I mean, it took a little bit, so what the problem now is, is people contact the fire department because they don't, couldn't get anybody at the DPW. So I'm wondering, I know you have the system set up before, is there a way to set it up so they could call in, and then that message would automatically go to him in the event they have an emergency?
On the WINS system, yeah?
Well, some type of system so that if somebody, because a couple of these were where the pipes had burst and they got water going everywhere, they, they wanted somebody to shut it off, and so unfortunately, since they couldn't get anybody at the DPW, they called the fire department, which then has to try to call the DPW. I'm just wondering, I know how, there's certain ways that you can have a call come in and then...
There is, but they, it would require that every single time it went to the same phone.
Okay.
I would recommend calling the police, nine-one-one. If, if, if they want a policeman in town, that's, that's an emergency, they can call nine-one, and the policeman will have the call list of all DPW, and we will get a hold of somebody.
Okay, well, we just need some way to notify, because they're kind of struggling, they're calling the DPW, and maybe, maybe put a message on there to say, if you have a ruptured pipe and it, you know, it's an emergency, then, you know...
Yes, and even if they call the non-emergency number to our police department at night, it's forwarded to the, to the dispatch.
Yeah, I, I just, I think we need to set something, because I just keep seeing it on Facebook that they're panicking, and they're trying to find somebody, and the last few calls have come through the fire department.
We'll, we'll hit all our city media, our social media accounts, and I'll put it on WINS and the city website.
Okay. Another thing is, is the sirens. Now, the sirens really aren't part of the fire authority, because one is in the DPW, one's in the old city hall, but we've noticed though, I know they didn't do a test, I don't think this month, they usually do them on a Monday. The one at city hall hasn't been working, and it's been an issue, but I haven't heard them do any testing whatsoever, um, and with eventually the snow going away, we're going to get into the spring season, I want to make sure we get that resolved before we get into the tornado season.
I'll check into that.
Wonder if you ever heard anything, was that the walkability thing, remember that meeting where they were supposed to put the maps and stuff together? Have we ever heard back from those people?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had the meeting at the library on...
I could actually speak to that. At the planning commission meeting this month, we, uh, we continued with the city's non-motorized plan, which is sort of an offshoot of that. And, um, Chris did a wonderful job of trying to follow up. Um, we did not get a great finished map from that. Essentially, um, long and short of it, it's really an unfinished project with the county. It sort of fizzled out, and, uh, I've had a call into Dave Struck, and he sort of shared the same thing. It was unfortunate, because that's why the, the planning commission postponed that work, um, and we put it back on our agenda to now start to deal with it, uh, because we didn't want a duplication of efforts. We felt that the county had a great process and all those meetings, and we wanted to, um, incorporate that into ours, so that's why we postponed it, and, uh, we requested, um, and when Mrs. Baxter went way back and, and looked, it had been nine months, um, back to my first request of those completed maps, and they kept saying, we'll get them, we'll get them, and even at our last meeting, they said, oh, we'll, we'll get you, and it really was Xerox of something that was years old, so, um, when I, um, heard from the Metropolitan Planning Commission, it was, um, in not so many words, that is relatively an incomplete process, and that's sort of where it will stand.
Can I respond to that, too? Um, we've been doing that Safe Road to School, which is also a walkability audit, um, and we got all of the surveys done, but that has been put, we have to wait till April, we have to get a, a large group of the community together and actually do a visual, um, what, seeing where the children are walking, people are walking, and, um, there are grant monies available through them for, for some of that, too, so we probably should coordinate.
Absolutely.
And then you said maps, you, I gave some big maps to the city office.
Yeah, this was the, the county's program that they were doing that we've been waiting, and that's what we followed up.
Putting the diac ramp and where the pipes go.
Are you speaking of the, the Trail Town?
Yeah.
Yeah, she was not talking about the, this is Trail Towns, which is a big mystery to me, too, because...
Right, no, this is the one I was discussing, is Trail Towns. Because I also went to most of the meetings as well, and I followed up, and that's, that was my response.
Yeah, because they were supposed to come back, it was a long time ago.
Absolutely, it was over nine months ago, was the delayed...
But, but that's part of SIMCAG, and, and I did get maps, and, and I had, you know, left them at city office and things like that.
The completed Trail Towns program was not completed at the county level, is what the county let me know, what, about two weeks ago.
Okay, so that's still a mystery. All right. Um, the other thing, the last one is, I know we have parking issues downtown, and I tried to bring this to John once before, that Lexington uses a shuttle issue with theirs, and I, I heard that they were going to do that for the music festival, but John was going to check with the, um, what's the one on Mary Street?
Council on Aging?
Yeah, well, the Washington Life Center.
Council on Aging.
Because they have the shuttles and stuff, and see if there isn't any way that we can start working on some type of deal when things get really going this summer, um, to come up with some type of shuttle service program to try to alleviate some of the parking. So, that was just another suggestion. That's it.
Commissioner Avery?
Just real briefly, um, I wasn't sure if I had been signed into the WINS, but I did find out. Got a phone call at three-thirty, I think Saturday night, telling me, a great shock all of a sudden, that it was cold and windy outside.
I got that one, too.
Thank you, but some of us, a telephone...
You can, you can limit the notification.
Yeah, you have to go in and shut it off. That's what I did.
I mean, that's basically got mine down to, just like when the, you know, we're being attacked by the hordes or something, you know?
Yeah, well, okay, that's, that's...
So, I, you know, the weather alerts and all that, I, I deselected to try to get to like the real serious things.
Tornadoes.
Tornadoes and...
Okay, that's a good idea, thank you. And, uh, other than the snow shoveling issues that we know about, hopefully, we won't have to go into looking at any punitive measures for non-shovelled things, but...
Oh, that's always the next step, I know. What, what do we do on that, uh, chief?
I'm sorry, sir.
As far as people that don't shovel their sidewalk, what is the...
The ordinance enforcement officer will go around, look at the incidents, and take appropriate action. If my officers see it, they can go out and give a citation at that time.
What's the deadline usually? I mean, like, uh, in Madison Heights, they give us like twenty-four hours. They'll, they'll come by, they'll put an notice down, if it's not clear in twenty-four hours, you get fined.
The ordinance says immediately, is what the ordinance says, but especially in a snow emergency like that, my officers in the DPW are so tied up that it is probably a two or three-day window before we can even look at it.
No, that's reasonable, really, for our, our city. It's just, things have gone much longer than that, and there are places where I know people live there, and they could do it. So, anyway, thank you.
We, I'll have this, I'll have the ordinance enforcement officer go around, especially after next snowfall, and take a look at these.
Commissioner Simpson?
Um, to speak to Commissioner Hendrick's point about the, the shuttle busing, when we were working last year with the, uh, music festival, trying to find a solution for the shuttle busing, I contacted Debbie Herity at the Washington Life Center for the Council on Aging about busing, and, you know, sort of went from just one event to say, okay, could this be part of our long-term, uh, solution for our parking? Um, she looked into it and actually spent quite a bit of time on our behalf, and said that Council on Aging was so low on staff as far as, uh, trained drivers with the CDLs, that even to service our one weekend for the music festival wasn't possible. So, um, I know they have a new director now, um, and it's certainly well worth another phone call, but, uh, she looked into it on our behalf about a year ago and said, and actually loved the idea of it, and thought that it would be a great way, since they were right there in the community, um, but the, she sort of talked, uh, spent a couple weeks in higher up in her ranks, and, uh, that's the response that she received, is...
They need more people with CDLs to volunteer.
Uh, and employed to them, because I guess there's a, a training, uh, as well with them, uh, because these, these are different than the folks that volunteered to drive the trucks, it's a trained CDL class T endorsement, um, and that, that was the issue that she gave us. Perhaps, uh, you know, their circumstances change, certainly well worth looking into, but just to know the, um, what I found out years ago, that's why we ended up contracting to the school district for the, for that service last year, and look to do that this year as well. Um, and just want to implore everyone at home, anyone in the audience, to, um, remind them that, uh, we have our preliminary budget review sessions, uh, our workshops, um, the week of March twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, they begin at six PM here at the fire hall. Traditionally, those are not well-attended, there's, um, only been a few of us here in attendance that are not on the commission. Um, it shouldn't be news to anybody that our budget condition, um, as are many cities and municipalities, um, is not in the strong position right now. It'll definitely be a concessionary year, has been for some time. City manager Gaber spent a good deal of time putting together a nice presentation about how we got to this process, and how we've already made many cuts, and, uh, the changes that we've made, tremendous changes over the last year. I don't think people really realize on a day-to-day basis how difficult of a decision that this, these are to make, and how tough of a situation we are in. It's not a matter of holding back for a few years and then things will improve. Uh, the way we fund school districts and municipalities in our state is broken, the Headley Amendment and other things prevent us from restoring this funding, um, to even two thousand eight levels, so I would implore, um, citizens to come to as many of those meetings as possible. Um, it's hard for us to represent you if we don't know what you feel. Um, I would implore you to contact us if you can't make those, to express your concerns. It's not as easy as fund it all, or, or find ways. We've been finding ways, and, and, and we've done all that, and we've been doing that for a number of years now, um, and it's to the point where very difficult decisions will need to be made, um, and it is, is on us to make those decisions, and all we can do if we don't hear from people is make the best decisions that we can come up with based on the information we have in front of us, so I implore people, I would love to see the audience filled and for that to be a lengthy process. I know some might cringe on that, but it's very important, and I wish that more people would be engaged in that. It's a very difficult process, and, um, we'd like to know what you would like funded. Um, it's, we don't have extra money to go around, we don't have extra staff, there are no services, we've postponed, um, capital improvement programs, um, and, uh, it's, uh, to the tune of six figures of the amount of money that we have to make to get a balanced budget, so it's a very important time for our community, so I wish that more people would be engaged and invite you to attend that process, or contact some of us to express your concerns.
I, I would, uh, speak to that a little bit, Commissioner Simpson. I've been, again, approached about town hall meetings. There are, we have a significant number of people that are interested in having a town hall meeting, and I was thinking this would probably be, uh, we can't get people to the budget workshops, but we could, maybe an excellent time during the budget workshops to try to host a town hall meeting, and, uh, try to reach out to, uh, the public about these type of issues and concerns, so...
I think that would be great.
I mean, I, we could put it on the agenda to, to ask the city administration to try to put one together for the next meeting, but, uh, you might want to start thinking about it now. I think there, there's many questions about levels of service and, um, what the ci, the citizens expect from their city and their administration, and what they want us to spend money on, and I think it's time to have a serious dialogue about it, so if we can get a town hall meeting, that might be one way to change, you know, the way it works, and maybe we can get that input we're looking for. Not in a structured meeting, but in more an open-type meeting, question-and-answer type thing with a, a small agenda, so I think this is the time to do it. So, so if we can get that done, that'd be great. Speaking to the, uh, problems with parking and everything, um, these type of things are actually opportunities, so for all you young, uh, entrepreneurs out there, put your thinking caps on, these are problems that you can solve. I mean, it's, might be, sound like it's tongue-in-cheek, tongue-in-cheek, but, um, you know, like some cities have little rickshaw services that can get you from point A to point B. These are people-powered devices, uh, we're pretty flat, that would be not, not something, you know, so, so think about, we have a, a problem getting people from one point to another. Uh, I've, I've talked to the people, uh, businesses on Broadway that are down near the bridge, and they feel they don't get the Canadian, uh, traffic, the people that come over on foot, because that's just a little bit too far. So if there's some way to facilitate that from the, the ferry to maybe some of the businesses a little further from downtown, uh, these are problems, but they're also a little further from downtown, these are problems, but they're also opportunities. So put your thinking caps on out there. The other thing is, I, I'm very excited and pleased about the announcements made today about the music festival. I think that's great that they have a major sponsor like Rockford Carbon, that the Klingers have gotten involved. That's just like fantastic news, and I wish them all the success in the world. Yeah, that's about all I got right now. And I did say I was always going to have a quote at the end of meetings, or try to, so I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going to paraphrase this one. It was originally attributed to Thomas Jefferson, I think in fifteen fifty-two or something like that, and it's, this, the quote is, "A government that is powerful enough or big enough to give you everything you want is powerful enough to take everything you have." Just food for thought. So with that in mind, we are now going to be moving into executive session. We are moving into executive session for the purpose of review and possible approval of executive session minutes from December eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. There may or may not be any action taken upon return from open session, but you're welcome to stick around and come back. And right now, I need a motion to enter into executive session.
Make a motion that we move into executive session.
Support.